One and two. I'm sorry. One and two are withdrawn.
Well, you can't do it in this meeting.
Huh?
You have to do it in the next meeting.
We will, okay. Number three. Number three is the...
I did not hear y'all say February.
Number three is the, uh...
She wanted it carried over to February the 7th, and I did not hear that.
Okay, so it goes over next meeting.
Sorry, thanks to go to the next meeting, yes, sir.
Good deal. All right, number four. Yeah, come here. Tanya. Number four is the, uh... What's going on here? Give me back.
It's the rezoning on Mobile Highway. They need to rezone it to expand the gas station 'cause it's currently zoned at one.
Which gas?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
It's, um, at Mobile Highway in, uh, um...
Sixty-five?
Sixty-five, yeah.
The rezonated... Commercial, B2 commercial for that.
Yeah, 'cause they want to expand the gas station.
Okay, all right.
And what's on it right now?
It's a gas station.
Oh.
They want to tear the canopy down.
This is down the Home Hall exit.
Yes.
Right, so it's already a gas station there?
Yeah, it's just gonna be expanded.
Yes.
Oh, it's empty land?
No, it's a gas station there.
But they're not zoned for that?
Correct, it was in our jurisdiction before the zoning was in place.
Is it the Chevron?
Is it the Chevron?
I don't remember what's on it.
It's been there a long time.
It's been there a long time.
It's an old station.
Okay, we got you.
It's good.
No problem.
Okay, number five.
This is on Dozier Road. They're wanting to rezone it to develop an RV park.
Okay.
Planning Commission had no issues.
Is this... Is this Indian property?
I think so, it's the Dozier property. It's out there...
I believe it, I believe porch, porch Indian.
It's by the casino, but it's the Dozier property.
Creek Indians own it, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. Give them some room. Okay, all right. That's good, okay, I got any problem with that? Anybody got a problem with that?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, number six.
This is a rezoning from commercial to multifamily to convert the existing extended stay to apartments.
This is my district, and I'm okay with this. Neighborhood's okay with it. Okay, next item, number seven.
This, um, last council meeting, we had to figure out what district it was in 'cause it was listed as three, but, uh, it's not in three, it's in two.
It's in two, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh...
Okay.
I didn't, I met with him. He didn't know where it was.
No, he didn't, I don't think so. Okay, all right, number eight. Voting precincts, uh...
That's just...
Matt Clark talked about, tell me about this.
Okay, 7C, they had changed the address for the, uh...
Okay.
Theater, that's changing that address. It's still staying with the theater, but the street address has changed.
Okay.
In District Nine, AUM no longer wants to be a voting precinct, so we reassigned those to Frazier, and we just had to realign the other.
Okay, always realign, okay, I got you, all right. Anybody got a question about number eight?
No.
Okay. Number nine, the mayor asked to carry it over 'cause it's talking about some annexation or something?
No, sir, it's setting the council election.
It's just a date.
I think it's number 10.
All right, Chip sent me number nine, but I'm thinking...
Number nine, we wanted to, just have some questions. Robert's gonna come and present some information to y'all about annexation, and before we move forward on that, I wanted to just kind of hold off on that. That was a question I was gonna ask you this morning, and I think Chip talked to the president about that.
Do we have that choice, though? Isn't it set by law that we have to have the election date set up?
Yes, sir, it's set. Y'all adopted an ordinance adopting Watson State Code, but y'all can amend it, but it has to be amended six months prior to the election, so we're getting close.
Getting close.
Okay, we'll have it straight by the next meeting.
Okay.
Why don't we just amend it in December?
Sorry?
Why don't we just amend it in December? Is that all right, was anybody agreeable?
Wait, wait, I got a question, I'm sorry. Tell me, what's going on again? You said Robert's gonna talk to us?
The... It's about annexation.
Robert's gonna talk to you about annexation, of a community that wants to be a part of the city, and from the city standpoint, we would like to be comfortably over 200,000 people for federal appropriation purposes, and Robert's gonna come and inform y'all of that. So before we move forward on the day, I know there's a process with that, and so I just wanted to, instead of voting on it, having to come back and maybe change it.
Well, we're gonna hear from him in the work session, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have this available, after that anyway, in the five-part meeting.
So, so let me make, so let me make sure I understand. We want them to be annexed in and be a part of this voting cycle? Is, that's the focus? That's kind of what we want to get? That's the objective?
Yeah, I was thinking about from voter's standpoint, we want them annexed in so we can be a part of it, so they can be a part of the count. Right now, we're a little bit, you know, under 200, depending on how the federal government looks at that census, and, um, we'd like to be comfortably over that for federal appropriation reasons.
Are they on this, um, agenda?
No.
No, no, he's just gonna come and present the discussion, just to inform you about it, and then you all would have to vote on it and accept it and all that. So that's the only reason why...
At the end of the work session, he's gonna talk to us, okay?
I thought I saw something to be annexed in over here. Oh, okay, that's something, okay, got you.
All right, let's go to number 10.
You'd have to carry that one over to you.
Okay, nine and 10, we, yeah, I've got all of it. Okay. All right, number 11. This is the, uh...
Montgomery Drive?
Montgomery Drive, and this is... This is all the projects that we're talking about in the deal, okay? All right.
Charlie, the county did not vote on these today.
That's right.
And I see Susan and Terry here. Were y'all able to set up a meeting? I watched that, I watched that county commission meeting. Are we gonna have a meeting in a week or so?
Ms...
I think they have some discussions going on about the vote, or the lack of a vote this morning. You know, what I would say to y'all is, we've kind of been going like this, and at some point, you know, somebody's gotta keep going on the track, and this is why I would say that. You know, this money has to be obligated by 2024.
Right.
And as y'all have seen, the compliance is very time-consuming and involved, and so today's resolution lets us, it's not the last chance that you have to vote on these projects. This lets us go out and get the information necessary to bring things back to you for you to vote again when we have hard numbers, right? Because you can't appropriate this money and spend this money without hard numbers. So when you look at this resolution, it says potentially obligate, and I would encourage y'all to move forward so that Terry and I can do our work. We can't do the, and that way, you know, these programs, if the county does come around, which they may, we can begin the compliance work. We can begin to find the information we need to bring those things back to you. Also, there's $9 million of additional money for sewer, and I know the community is watching that money and making sure that we are, you know, moving forward on those. They've been told, you know, more than one time that their sewer was gonna get considered, and I would just... We have heard from those communities calling us, asking what the status of that money is. So I would encourage y'all to move ahead so that we can at least do our compliance part. We won't have to march in place so that we can get synced back up. Hopefully, we will get synced back up soon, but I would encourage y'all to move forward on that.
Okay, I think his questions were, his question was, did you get a meeting set?
We haven't set a meeting.
Okay.
We don't know, and here's why I'll say that, and I'm just gonna be real honest in this work session. I don't know that those joint meetings do anything if people aren't...
If they don't do it, it tears the whole project up.
Correct, correct.
So in reality, until they move, we can't really move either.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Well, you can, you don't have to.
We can leave, we can leave it straight by moving before them. I don't understand why we're always waiting on the county to vote first, I guess, because they meet in the AM and we meet in the afternoon. We need to leave, we have met, and we meet at a joint meeting. We come to the table, we bring these things, and we're waiting on them to dictate what we're doing. We tell them, hey, we moving forward what we're saying now. We putting the ball back in your court to come along with what we agreed on, we came together, we added things into this ordinance based on what county commissions and city councils said that they wanted in this ordinance. Just because the county don't move, they shouldn't hold us hostage. You know, we need to move forward, show the citizens of Montgomery County and the city of Montgomery that we have leadership on things that we have agreed. We don't take those five minutes, this is the city of Montgomery. We benefit more than when we look at countywide than anything when we look at the city of Montgomery. So we have to show leadership, stick together on what we decided that we're gonna do and go forward, irregardless of what they do. They gonna follow our lead. We're not gonna follow just because they didn't vote now, we're not gonna vote now, we got a vote on them. Let's lead them, let's lead this horse to water.
Let's talk about, this is strictly proposed projects.
Projects. Yes, and you'll get another opportunity to vote on every single one of them.
You can stop anything after, when you have to vote for actual money.
That's right, it just lets us, it just lets us do the background work. It's not really obligate, it says potentially obligate. If it comes back and y'all don't like it, you can be like, we're not gonna obligate any money.
It's give you a chance to go get the RFPs, bring this back and say, hey, this is what this project's gonna cost, let's move forward with it.
Correct.
So we keep stopping the train, everybody says, let's turn some dirt, we wanna see some dirt. Now we stopping the brakes, we pumping the brakes. Now we gonna wait two more weeks on the county, then if the county don't vote, we pump the brakes again. Let's send it back to them and force their hand to do what we agreed on. And stop letting them dictate what we do. We are leaders in this city. There's nine members up here, we are the leaders. Let's show that we have leadership and we're unified. Stop letting them tell us what to do.
Well, the problem is that we probably not unified, so let me say that, 'cause some of this stuff on here, I'm not sure about how it got on there. It may have been mentioned, but for us to say that we done voted on it and said it's what we want, I don't know where it come from, so let's say that first. And then secondly, let me say, I heard you, Susan, when you said that people call you, they called me too. The last time, last time we met, we voted so that you can go out and do the study, you told me it's gonna take eight weeks. So even if this get carried over two weeks, you ain't moving no dirt. So don't make it seem like this is stopping you from doing anything. Let's also go back to, we had phase one and phase two. Where those hard numbers at? I hadn't seen anything. We voted on it, it came through, you ain't brought no hard numbers back? You hadn't went down there. I'm just saying, why are we trying to rush so fast and get every phase allocated for when you not even bringing us stuff back from the first phases we talked about? Let's do that, I think that's necessary so we really know where we are. 'Cause it is, 'cause y'all bring us these, and we always say, well, there's some stuff for him not concerned about. Well, this is just help getting us so we can go out and get numbers and bring them back, but then you bring another phase, and then, well, this is just so we can go... And then you bring another phase. So let's stop doing all the phases, let's just stop rushing it, and let's be clear about what we going and what we doing. That make sense to you? That's how I feel, that's my leadership.
Mr. President, I just, we heard our consultant say, we have to have this money obligated by 2024.
This is 2023, January.
If we vote October of 2023, now we forcing their hands in 90 days to go ahead and get all this stuff obligated.
It won't take nobody that long.
When we're two years out on what we need to do. No, we're not gonna agree 100% on everything that we're doing, but we know what we discuss in these meetings. Everybody sits in these meetings, have no question, we walk out.
Yes, we do.
We have these, like you say, these after meetings and before meetings, that we come up with these ideas that we wanna change what we already agreed on. We put nine additional million dollars in there on sewer based on what you asked for.
Absolutely, and that don't change, that's... Listen, if that don't, no, I knew about that, now that's gonna stay the same.
So now you got what you want, so you gonna go...
No, it ain't that I got what I want, 'cause she said it's not even there if we don't vote on this, so it ain't even there, so let's say that.
All right, so we gonna...
Don't try to, and listen, don't make it seem like, don't try to hold me hostage and be political with me, I'm not with it.
We're not gonna allow them to do their job.
I'm not with it.
Hold it, hold it, hold it.
Get it together.
I thought I had the mic.
Enough conversation.
I had the mic.
I had it too.
You interrupted me.
One at a time, one at a time.
So we can move on.
And that's all I'm saying.
Thank everybody who understands the situation.
My point is, we're paying the consultant to do a job, they bring the information to us that we're paying, and then every time they bring us something, we pump the brakes because the county said that they don't wanna do it. That don't make sense to me.
I got a question. How much are we actually financially committed so far?
So there are, I'm talking from memory, okay, but the YMCA contract is, it is with your staff for execution.
Okay.
So that's one. Of course, you have us. The CareStar Compliance is, there's a big thick book that's complete. That contract is ready, that's ready to go.
Okay.
Okay, those are contracts that sign within five days, that money could move if your departments are ready to move those. Here are things that are in procurement. The Small Business Support Program that has completed the procurement process, the evaluation is complete. So now we're gonna get those scores, and we have to start what's called a risk assessment process. That will take a while, that's, it's, we got a list of things we have to go through. By a while, I mean like maybe four weeks. So we're doing that for small business, we're doing that for critical home repairs and evaluation, and there's one...
How about the body cams for the policeman? Have we got, have we funded that for the body cams for the policeman?
Body cams have been funded for the county. The city is almost done with procurement. My understanding is, today, the city and the county both sent the notice of intent to award on the broadband study and the sewer planning. We've completed the assessments, the risk assessments for those contractors, which is not as steep. Mr. President, if I could add one thing for your consideration in the broader scheme of what we're trying to accomplish here. So you guys have allocated about jointly, about 60 million, all right? There's about 25 remaining, give or take. One of the things that we are hoping to accomplish for you through this is to go ahead and start doing the compliance on a number of things. The chances are, a lot of these things will probably be more than 85 million, but the reason we wanna start the compliance is because we are in the end of the third quarter here on obligation. So we want you guys to be in a position where some of these things are under, you already have the compliance done, contracting ready so that you can allocate these numbers, these dollars, so that you don't have to send any money back. Certainly understand, and I'm not, you know, you guys have to move on the timeline that works for you, but there is a bit of pull and push here with some of the other entities that we're working with. Some compliance has taken nine months to a year, all right? So the compliance, particularly when we start talking about sub recipients, and when we talk about major capital projects like sewer, like building community centers and things of that nature, it is a greater compliance window and greater compliance measures that we have to meet. So from our perspective, it's all about making sure that we have enough time for all of this money to be under contract by December 31st of next year. When we say obligate, it means a legal obligation for the city and the county to pay those funds.
And those will come back individually to be obligated?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Just like going on the small business support, you're working on it, you got procurement out now, that will come back to us for approval of a funding situation.
Yes.
But if you're already working on it, but you say you need this, so you can work on it, I'm confused.
So we're working on the phase one and phase two programs. You have given us permission to work on those. So those are advancing, all right? Phase three, again, it's all about making sure that the clock doesn't run out on us. And I know it seems like these things happen quickly, but when we start adding some of these capital projects, for example, 16 million, 15 or 16 towards sewer, all right? So that's gonna take longer to complete the assessment processes on. We're gonna have to evaluate how they're procuring things, their timelines, and moving those things forward. So when we add all these capital projects, we're just looking at a longer timeline. When, if you move forward on this resolution tonight, we will go back, and what, one of the things we talked about internally is how we communicate these things to you. I know we sending emails and things of that nature. I know you guys are busy, and you don't always have time to read emails. So one of the things we're thinking of doing is one-pagers on our assessments, what we bring back, and really trying to make sure that you guys have a clear understanding of where these things stand. For example, I think one of the items on there is Baptist Hospital. So what we would do, if you allow us, direct us to go look at that, we would start having those conversations, we would start looking at their financials, we would start talking with them about their needs, and we would be able to bring something back to you as a proposal of what that funding might look like for them. Then once you okay that, then we can move forward with contracting or procurement, depending on the type of award you have. That make sense?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have something to... I know, from me just listening to a lot of the confusion, I think it's a piece of this that's missing. From when the consultants report to us, they're giving us all of their information and their timelines. We're approving it, but we're missing a piece from the city departments that actually have to push this through. We haven't received a communication from the city departments, i.e. procurement, on where they are in the process. And I think the council kind of misses that piece where we not getting reports from them on where they are. And we need to know that information, 'cause if they're not pushing through in a timely manner, then the consultants can't push through. So we are approving it, and we're doing these things, but we gotta make sure that we're understanding and knowing the communication piece, because it all runs together on what these departments are doing and how far they're going. So I would ask that they report to us that information. It could be an email, it doesn't have to be them coming up officially reporting, but we need to know so we can, that's how we can keep our constituents engaged and informed, 'cause now we know all the pieces. We just hearing from them.
Just like Ed asked a question. What had been obligated? And I think it's what, 14 million been obligated?
Right.
Those have already been in front of both bodies and approved for expenditure.
Right.
Now the rest of this stuff has to come back to us for expenditure approval. All right?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I just have, I just have some, just, these should be simple questions. That 500,000, number E, for domestic violence, child abuse, is that that Family Sunshine Center that, did she not ask for a million? Am I...
She did, but the county has the other half million.
That's simple.
These allocations are just the city funds on your resolution.
Then the 750,000 of Crampton Bowl. Mayor, what are we gonna do down at Crampton Bowl? Just curious. On that 750,000 for Crampton Bowl?
What needs to be done?
Yes, sir.
Oh, God.
Everything.
The 750 doesn't even come close. I mean, the locker rooms need to be upgraded as well as the concessions now.
Right.
That probably now jumps at the locker rooms, which is what, you know, the Sun Belt and others were telling us over two years ago. You also have areas underneath the foundation of the stadium itself that we have sure of new turf, as well, that turf is now about 11 years old. I think the lifespan is about, not 11 years, let me say that. So those are some of the things, as well as scoreboard, audio, and also areas in the press box.
Is anything gonna be done over at Patterson?
Yeah. I, now, I don't know if it's gonna be done out of this money, but Patterson, we on the hook for that.
Okay.
But Patterson actually has to take a secondary position because we have to, have to fix Biscuit's Riverwalk Stadium where the biscuits play in the quarters of Major League Baseball.
Okay.
So that has to take precedent over Patterson Field. And Patterson Field is probably, at least, last counted was two and a half million. That was over a year ago. So I know costs go up, and that may be a little bit higher.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else?
Uh-huh, one last question. If, um... Levitate, if this is not approved tonight... Well, no, let me, I'm sorry, if this is approved tonight, nobody's getting no money tomorrow, right?
Right.
No.
No, no, money not going to anybody.
We're gonna, not off the items that are on here. We're gonna, we're gonna work on those things and bring them back to you.
Nobody spent, yeah, this, only money that's been spent is the ones that have already been to us, and we approved it, and now you move forward, okay? Okay, let's go to next item. Next item is a liquor license on South Court Street. Who's got that one? That's a mine's pride on South Court.
That's four.
Four. Oh, yes, that's four, yeah. South Court Street.
Right across from I D A.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's on my side. Do they already sell?
Yeah, it's just a renewal. Okay. Change ownership. Alright, number 13, same way, got a liquor license on Federal Drive.
I'm okay with that.
Three, you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Number 14 is a.
Was that yours?
New, I can't hear. You board appointment, 15 appointment, 17, 16 appointment, 17's an appointment, 18's an appointment.
Mr. President, Mr. Pruitt and Mr. Calhoun would like to discuss 18 before we go on it.
I'm sorry, y'all, y'all might, y'all might. Don't tell everything you know, okay? Because I don't think any one of y'all won't have a reversal on that conversation. Alright, number 19, tear them down, and number 20 is the nuisance. Okay. We got some people wanna talk to us. Bill, Bill Lord, Think Big wants to talk, and then I want Robert, you come tell us about the annexation.
Eight words, you got them on the counter.
Three minutes, Bill.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, good to see you today.
Likewise.
Matter of fact, I think I saw you Saturday also.
I'm everywhere.
Yeah, at Alpha Breakfast.
That's right.
It's good to be here and it's good to be alive.
Amen.
It's a good thing, yeah. Brotherly seen and viewed.
Amen. I wanted to remind you all, remind some and tell others about the Think Big Summit. Have you all seen this or been made aware of this?
Yes.
The Think Big Summit. I have some great speakers. Jack Galacini, Ray White, Pastor Shuford, Mary Ann Wilson, Bernard Mitchell. It's gonna be awesome. And I'm excited to say that we're calling preachers especially and leaders to come together and let's talk about how we can help MPS and help Dr. Melvin Brown do what they want to do. They wanna make a difference in the lives of students and also in the lives of parents and make a difference when it comes to families. I want to tell you today that I was blessed to be raised in a two-parent family, a father who pastored in the AME Church for 40 years and a mother who was a homemaker. And she took care of home and raised the garden, and I know the importance of family. I'm telling you today that if we're going to turn things around in terms of the culture, we've got to get back to rescuing the family. And one of the best ways to do it is starting people to think big, talk big, and take big action. Now, think big means believe in God, believe in grace, believe in good, believe in giving, believe in getting, believe in gratitude. All of this is what I call the think, the big factor. And today, I have a proposal for you all to know that I'm not just blowing smoke. We're serious about making a difference in the lives of young people in the school and in the community. And like Mayor, you said, you appreciate the 501(c)(3) organizations. There are a lot of them, but, but we need some businesses. And one of the businesses that we're going to start is.
Alright, thank you.
My, okay.
One, two seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Page up, please.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, Robert, come tell us about annexation. Robert, you over there?
Yes.
Okay, back to the back.
Alright, Mr. President, regarding annexation, this is, the city received a request for an annexation for, from the Eastwood Villa Neighborhood, which is out in extreme east Montgomery, back in about the late September, early October 2022 timeframe. And based on that request, we began evaluating the requests since that time up through nearly the Christmas holiday period. So just want to go over the, the brief summary that I passed out to you just to kind of give you some, some information on it. As I said, as it's enclosed, the brief summary of the, the review of the proposed annexation request from the Eastwood Villa Neighborhood via the Neighborhood Services Department, Old Vaughan, Old Bonds, which is in the Wall area of East Montgomery County. This area was primarily reviewed by the Planning Department to assess the number of houses, population assumptions, based on housing size, whether or not the neighborhood was in a flood plain or not, and whether or not it was contiguous to the city limits of the city. As it says in that second bullet, Eastwood Villa Neighborhood subdivision is 157 home subdivision with 30 vacant lots with the potential for more homes to be constructed, constructed for families. Assuming the figure of one person per household for the neighborhood, there would be approximately a population of 157 additional people. Assuming that there was two persons per household, there would be the assumption of 304. And assuming three persons for, per household, there would be the assumption of about 471 people, nearly 500. So that would be nearly an additional 500 people that we could potentially add to the city, limits of the city of Montgomery, which would in turn grow our population. Our current census population is, as of the year 2020, is 200,603 people. Of course, you all know that the Census Bureau puts out annual estimates that, that estimate population, but I don't put a lot of stock into those estimates because those estimates are not a 100% 100% count of people on the ground as they do at 100% when they do the, the, the once every 10-year census. So I think the more reliable population number to go with is the, is the once a decade population estimate, which is 200,603 people. The Eastwood Villa Neighborhood subdivision does not have any homes that are in a flood plain, as I had previously stated. The western side of the Eastwood Villa subdivision is, is 0.3 miles from the city of Montgomery's easternmost limit and is one mile from the easternmost city limit line on the eastern side of the neighborhood. Eastern Villa, Eastwood Villa Neighborhood is contiguous to the city of Montgomery's city limits, and there are four properties between the existing easternmost city limit line and the Eastwood Villa Neighborhood. I did provide.
Robert.
Yes, sir.
Are you saying they're contiguous to the city?
Yes.
Are they contiguous to the Ohio Fair plant out there?
Yes, sir. And I don't have that in front of me, but yes, based on.
That's a long ways. Like me, I looked on the map, it looks like it's a good long ways.
Well, I mean, it's, as, as I said in that last bullet, it's only 0.3 miles from the city's easternmost city limit line. So 0.3 miles in, in that, in that direction. And one mile from the easternmost limit line to the east.
But they're not contiguous to the city.
East side. But they, they are contiguous.
They are contiguous.
They are. Yes, sir.
Because the only thing we got out there is that Ohio Fair plant.
Correct.
And that would be, they'd have to be contiguous to that plant.
That is correct.
Okay, alright.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know that.
Yep. So there are three methods that, that the annexation can occur by, and that basically is by an act of the legislature, annexation by referendum, or by petition. The, the method that we're actually going, going for right now is basically by petition in which that's going on through the Neighborhood Services Department and the Neighborhood President in that, in that particular neighborhood. So they are in the process of preparing that, getting that petition prepared to present to the city to further evaluate whether or not it makes sense to do.
Have they looked at the tax structure difference? I know that they annexed into Pike Road.
No.
And de-annexed out of Pike Road. Because they looked at the tax structure and they didn't want to pay the difference in taxes, okay?
Right, right.
So I, I would think.
I would assume that, I mean, if they moved into Pike Road and they moved out, the taxes in Pike Road may be two to three times higher than what they are here for the city of Montgomery, because Pike Road does have much higher abalor on taxes. That is correct.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
What, what services, Robert, what services would we have to add?
Everything that anybody that's in the city of Montgomery, from a services standpoint, whether that's police, fire, garbage, trash, the whole nine yards.
Robert, do they have sewer out there?
Uh, let's see, sir, they.
They don't.
Uh, they do not have sanitary sewer. They're on septic tanks. They are on septic tanks.
When, and then, Robert, when is it that we anticipate the petition process will be complete?
We, we're assuming probably the next 30 days at this point.
So, so are we to carry over nine and 10 for 30 days to wait till the completion of that process, is what we're saying? Is that what the mayor has asked that we do?
We can't do that. We've got to have, we have to have the election set six months prior to the election date, unless we change the election date.
So we have to have this set by our next meeting, February meeting, very first meeting.
We're, we're getting our hair's breadth away from it.
So if, if it's not gonna make a difference, then we may as well carry this on tonight instead of carrying it over, because it won't, we don't give them enough time.
Another question I got about it too. I, I question how close our fire department is to.
And that, that's what I was gonna ask, Charlie.
Fire department, fire department has to be within five miles to affect their, their insurance rates, okay? I know walls, they're having trouble with their volunteer fire department out there. You read, listen to news, they're talking about that every day, but they, they don't have people.
Are we close?
Correct.
And so, but if they're looking to get on, get on, get our, our fire code number, go to, you know, be a fire, fire, fire code.
ISO rating.
ISO.
ISO rating.
I'm afraid that may not hap, they better check it.
I think that the assumption is that there will probably eventually, I mean, they would have to have response from the nearest fire station, but I think there is the, on the horizon to construct a fire station out in that area to, to serve the area better.
Okay, alright, okay. Sounds like.
Let, let me address the, the petition piece. We do think there's a chance that we could move this quicker than, than 30 days, if it's something that the council's open to. So now, we can put more resources to get the petitions done. I mean, I, I, there, there are ways to get the petition signed, I think, quicker than 30 days to meet that, that deadline. But I, but I also want, also say, keep this in mind too. I, I don't think we should make a, a long-term decision based on, on, on short-term solution. The municipal elections weren't always held in August. Municipal elections just changed to August about, I think about 10 years ago, in 2011. They, they probably were held in, in September, if I'm not mistaken. So the, the council does have some flexibility in that. If, if we think that adding 500, more residents, and I, and I emphasize 500 now, with the potential to add more, would be beneficial for the city itself. Again, my thought is looking at this from the standpoint of whether it's 200,000 or 600, I've seen data given to me that said that has us at 199,000. And so again.
Is that, is that number we're talking about, is that, is that the one that the feds used to give us to fund us? The 2000, 2020?
I think that was the annual number that Robert's talking about, is that, you know, we, we had that fluctuation. Some people opt in, you know, to Pike Road.
We hoping, we hoping they would use the 2023 number?
Absolutely. We want to be over 200,000 at, at, at every, every day that we can, ideally.
Well, it really doesn't have anything to do with elections. I mean, I don't know why you, with this, and this wouldn't have an effect, anything. If they come in between now and election day, they, they're citizens of Montgomery, they can vote, I guess. I don't know why it couldn't.
I would think so, yes, sir.
The city, I mean, they don't have to be in what we sit.
Six months.
Huh?
The annexation ordinance, you can put, assign them to a district when you do the annexation in the very same ordinance.
And so they would come in, the day they came in, they'd come in, they, they, they didn't find us a paperwork, they finished it in May, they would be in.
So you, so you said by next council meeting, we need to have this ruled on?
We're getting close, yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mayor, you think we can get it done by next council meeting?
We're gonna push for it.
Alright, well, well, that's, that's sound good. We carried on two weeks and.
Hey, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Just real quick, Mayor, one of the concerns I got is stretching our services, the city services so much. I mean, as low as we are in MPD and everybody wanting more patrols and we keep going further and further, that's, that's my, that's my hangup.
I understand.
I truly believe the fire department's gonna be an issue.
And that as well.
Is the chief around?
Yeah, I, I think that.
That five, that five mile deal is gonna be, gonna play into.
Yeah, hey, Mr. President, so I, I talked with Chief Jordan, and we're gonna have a sit down about what some of our options may be on that. Again, assuming that we can get, get all this done. But no, that, that has not been lost on, on me or, or Chief Jordan, nor what our Councilor Pruitt just mentioned as well with, with PD.
Okay. It does stretch, okay. Alright, we hear you. Okay, so where you go?
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Jordan will pitch for a new fire station, man.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Can I get Ms. Barbara and Mr. 7000 to come up?
Yes.
And talk to us about their event coming up, please, sir.
Yes, Mr. 7000, yeah, I want to see Mr. 7000.
I hit him out 699 times.
He, he has 7,000 pitches. He's gonna go for 15,000?
He holds the Guinness Book World Record in pitching 7,000 pitches in 12 hours? 13 hours, 7,000 pitches.
This is gonna take about 15 to 17 hours.
Barbara, she's gonna need your name, whole name for the record. Ms. Brenda.
Barbara Clark.
I got that, I got that.
Barbara, you can go ahead and start.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Approximately 44 veterans commit suicide every day. I am here on behalf of Sweet Pea Homes and Mr. James Lovejoy, retired First Sergeant, US Army, in his absence to present throwing for veterans. We are having a fundraising event at Biscuit Stadium to raise awareness for veteran suicide with the help of Mr. Michael Mosley, aka Mr. 7000, for which he will throw 15,000 pitches in less than 24 hours, breaking his own Guinness Book World Record for throwing live batting practice pitches. This event will involve the baseball community ranging from little leagues to the big leagues. We are also honoring our veterans during this event with a presentation about veteran suicide in which we will bring to light the problem and we will, we will inform them of local organizations that provide resources. That includes housing for homeless vets, job training, and mental health services. These organizations will also receive proceeds from this event. So today, we're requesting a donation from the council members of 25,000 as well as your presence at the event. I've attached a proposed budget for you to review. We accept any donation.
Okay. Mr. 7000, hate to put you on the spot, but can you share with the council a little bit about your background in a minute or two and what you do and who you've done it with and.
Okay. I've been in Major League Baseball for 42 years. I've been with at least 15 Major League teams. So I've thrown to Barry Bonds, Ken Griffey, pretty much Bryce Harper, anybody that, that's in baseball. But my main thing, I got out of baseball, I kept doing the Guinness Book of World Records for different organizations. But I come to Montgomery because somebody asked me to do the event, and I thought it was pretty special for, you know, the veterans. But I also moved to Montgomery from Atlanta because I want to get the inner-city baseball back. And this is a, a thing, that's why I'm doing this event also, to get the kids back into baseball in Montgomery.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll consider it.
And Ms. Brenda, are they a 501?
They're not on my list.
They're not on your list?
Uh-uh. That's just what I was checking.
Get on her list.
I, I'm gonna get you Randy Weaver's name and number.
I, I spoke with Randy Weaver. He said that I was registered as a vendor with the city.
Okay, he gave me a new list before I came in here and you're not on it, so we'll just have to double check.
We'll double check with Randy.
I think you guys did it back in November, I think, when you guys came before us in November and made the presentation, and you guys met with Randy, I think, back in the first part of November, so.
Yeah, December, it's December.
December, November, December, yeah.
I'm gonna say, I'll send him a text.
Okay.
And I'll call you and let you know.
Alright, thank you.
Charlie Genwright's gonna lead off, Mr. 7000. He will be the first one up to try to bat on the event on February the 20th.
A hot bat, okay. Okay, we'll adjourn for the moment. We'll be back in about.
Hey, Mr. President.